Hi, didn't think I was going to use that today. Um, let's go ahead and call our July special board meeting to order. It is 4:00 PM. Um, let us, let's stand if we're able for the.
...........................................................................
Thank you, everybody. Um, Vinnie, if you could take the role.
Collins.
Here.
Coyle.
Here.
Biker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Patrice. Yusuf Abramson.
Here. And if you could go ahead and start with our superintendent update and a welcome to Dr. Bonuma.
Thank you. (applause). I'm excited to be here. This is week three, day, I think, eight to nine, because we had a, yeah, I was always counting. But really excited to be here. We've had an opportunity even today to meet as a leadership team. I feel like we're, you know, starting going in the right direction, being able to, um, you know, start some of those conversations. Brett has been so kind to set up a number of meetings with stakeholders in the communities. So between now and the start of the school year, I forgot exactly how many, but it's a ton of them, uh, which is a great, a great way to get started, uh, be able to forge relationships. And so I think we're off to a good, good start and, um, yeah. So nothing to report quite yet, but all good stuff.
Which is all good. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Bonuma. Um, any board member updates? All right. If no board member updates, any public comments, which it doesn't look like we have any today. So let's go ahead and let's keep moving. Um, our first informational item is going to be the District 207 tentative budget. So I'll pass it to Ms. Booth.
Thank you. So the tentative budget is that on display since July 1st. It was shared with you in Friday notes. I'll, um, point out some of the highlights from the executive summary and then answer any questions that the board has. Um, if you look at the tentative budget, we are projecting a surplus of about 4% of expenditures. I think a large part of that has to do with property taxes. So we saw two back-to-back 5% CPIs, which is probably unknown in C, the history of CPI in the last 40 years. Um, the CPI caused an increase of 5.6 million. Then when you take, I mean, I'm sorry, 8 million, um, but when you add to that the abatement that we're not doing, plus, um, the recapture levy is also now creating a positive number. If you recall, it was past two years ago, in the first year, we thought that it might offset just what we were doing in refunds for that year. Um, this year, we saw that we collected kind of a more from that recapture levy than the refunds that we issued out. So in the budget, we turned that into a positive number, which then, of course, added to our property tax receipts. On the state side, state revenue is flat. The biggest is evidence-based funding. We have grandfathered. Um, we will not see an increase in that. The other allocations are based on really what we've collected this year, because the state hasn't come out with their allocations for next year. Uh, on the federal side, federal revenue decreased significantly because of the COVID-19 SIR funds were expiring. This was planned. This is something that we built in. Um, we used about 50% of them on HVAC equipment to improve the indoor air quality during the construction. On the expenditure side, um, we actually saw a decrease in expenditures, but that was related to constructions. Construction expenditures dropped about $17 million. Um, salaries remain close to CPI, even with us adding 12 additional certified staff positions and 20 additional TAs. Yeah, I mean, we, we looked at that number very carefully. What surprised us this year is we had, um, a rather high non-retirement turnover. So we had, um, I believe 13 staff members who were just non-retiring, who left the district, several of them from administrative positions. So we saw, um, quite a bit of savings on that turnover. Employee benefits continue to be high. Um, and actually, the budget might be a little low based on what we heard from our broker as our insurance renewal on Friday. Um, we budgeted a mid-year increase of about 8%. Um, it came in at 20 on Friday, so I will be looking at what is the impact on the tentative for the final budget on that. We increased expenditures in, um, the operation and maintenance fund is now, we're outside of that construction and getting into, you know, what we call the regular maintenance of our building. So all along, we've been building capacity to do that of six to seven million dollars per year. So those were the major changes. Um, if you flip to page four, it shows you the fund by fund summary, um, and the surpluses by fund. Uh, everything else, the, you know, the other notable exception is in the IMRF fund, uh, we increased the IMRF rate about 25%, which, um, we have now gone, we had savings because the plan was overfunded. That overfunding has now ended, so we should start to see that rate, which is just above 3% right now, climb to be about 7% over the course of the next several years. So we'll see, uh, probably about a 20% increase in that rate until it hits that amount. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go through the budget, if you want me to go through fund by fund, or if you, um, have questions after review.
I have a question. So, and this is kind of a George question as well. So you mentioned that, um, you know, there were savings with the new, uh, because it was retiree and then there was high turnover of non-retirees. And I would assume savings, you can replace those individuals with the savings is because they're older, retirees, and probably the non-retirees were a bit older. You, you come in at lower levels. But the question is, you said higher than normal non-retiree turnovers. Is that a, have you done a dive into why, the why of that?
I mean, some of it ranges from personnel matters to decisions for, uh, you know, move on to another district, uh, non-renewals as far as teachers not being renewed, you know, through the evaluation process.
Okay. So it's not a concern, not a?
No. Uh, probably a little bit higher this year, because Mary and I did talk about that, but as far as if you look at each case by case, uh, I don't, I don't see a pattern, but as you look at each case by case, um, nothing stands out.
Okay. No, no discord, no unhappiness, right? General, right?
No. I think these are all matters that either through our super, through our evaluation system or personnel matters through that process, then the outcome was, you know, that the decision was made based on the process of the investigation.
Okay, good.
And we saw at least two take administrative positions. So they left the teaching, right, to go become administrators in other districts.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But this, this is, um, with all the additional jobs that we've added in the TAs, uh, we've replaced all the people that left, that's included in here, right?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah. That was a pretty big wow for us. I would say that I went through it, then I was like, there's no way this number can be good. Um, can pretty much dove in, uh, and that's kind of how we discreetly reviewed it, because I, you know, we were like, how is it possible that we added this? We had a large retiree turnover class, which we had anticipated. Um, but it was the extra million dollars or so that we saw in non-retirement turnover that kind of was, um, the difference this year. It is an anomaly. We don't think that we'll see this happen every year, but it's just, um, something unique that happened this year.
And have the TA positions been filled or in process?
So some of them will be filled tonight through the board action, and they're still pending, uh, TA replacements. They should go to the office for a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And there might be some certified positions that we heard today that they're not going to be able to fill, um, and TSA's coordinator, so those will be reflected into when we do the final budget. We might leave them in there, because there's talk that they, they will start to advertise again in the fall for, um, maybe a second semester hire, if that's possible. Those are some of the known changes, just since we've printed this over a week ago.
Um, I have a few questions, and I was tempted to just email you, because it's probably simple answers, but I figured if anybody else had the same questions. On page 23, regarding the driver's education programs, are those years correct? Because it's referring to '21, '22, '23, and '24, and not current '24, '25 fiscal year?
Yes. So the reason I put that in there is because if you look at the historical amount, you can see that huge drop in purchase services.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to explain, if somebody was looking at the historical information, why the purchase service number went down and the salaries went up in previous years.
Okay. That makes sense. Uh, and then on page 45, 44 and 45. If I'm going to correct, yeah. Um, for other supporting services, I'm just curious, for supplies and materials, um, what's accounting for the 75% increase there?
Uh, 2,900 is grants. So, um, a lot of this has to do with, um... I would, I can shock, give you a definitive answer off the top of my head, I believe. That is how they allocated some of the funding for, um, homeless students in terms of putting some more supplies in there. But I will certainly get an email out. I'll answer that question in Friday notes.
Okay. And then the last one, uh, on page 47 and 48. Can I, I, can you tell me what, what are the non-public school services that we?
So, non-public school services, the biggest change here is, um, they are now hiring a, a position to service Notre Dame. So each of our non-public schools, meaning private schools, gets an allocation within the grants, and they are to tell the district how to use those services. In the past, Notre Dame has chosen to contract on their own some, um, some services, but that's really not truly compliant, we're finding, and the district has to hire a staffing position to serve those students. But we are required by law to set aside a certain percentage of each of our grant funds for non-public schools. And then those non-public schools get to request if they're going to use it or not.
So that addition is probably what's driving the 715%?
Correct. Yeah. That is a single staff position in special education that will now service those students.
Okay. That's it.
I, I have a question on page 46 for the School-Based Healthcare Center. So, um, the salaries can't be, we're not paying all the salaries there, right?
No. So most of it is contracted with advocate.
Okay, so our purchase services, enter?
Correct. Purchase services are advocate.
So that, um, that all the salaries are under the 434?
Correct. The only salaries that we pay is there's a health programming coordinator where 20% of the salary is charged to the School-Based Health Center. The rest is covered under Title I. So, and the increase in the purchase services is the expansion of, um, the .5 nurse practitioner at Main West. It is largely covered by an implementation grant, and the rest of it will be covered by, um, the foundation donation, which the board will be receiving and accepting in August.
And if more grants come in, I'm assuming you're applying for more grants for this, or no?
We apply for any grant that we can qualify for. Um, there are not a lot of School-Based Health Center grants out there. The two major ones, that implementation one and the standard one, what we've applied for, is a two-year grant cycle. Next year is year two of the grant cycle, so we will be reapplying for the '25, '26 school year, um, for the School-Based Health Center grants, and we'll apply for two, one for East, one for West. But, but for next year, to, unless there is a new grant opportunity that moves forward, we've applied and received the grants that we're eligible for.
So when we do purchase services, do we, so our, does our, um, budget always coincide with advocates, or are they at a different timing? Are they at a different fiscal year?
They have a different fiscal year. Every year in August, we adopt an amendment to, I think it's going to come in August, um, or you guys might have done it in June. We do an amendment to the School-Based Health Center to adapt their budget. Actually, I think you guys just did it in June. So they give us, based on the personnel that they have, um, an estimate for, and it's a budget estimate, so they do, um, an estimate. We agree to that budget, and then that is the most that they can bill us for.
So, okay. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the tentative budget?
Um, actually, I had one other question.
Okay.
Let me go find the page. It, it was about the capital, here, with capital projects. So are we're still given the 5 million a year? Is it, did stick just 5 million from, for the master facility plan?
No. So if you recall, um, we are now in the process of developing another master, uh, another fiber facility plan. When we started the referendum, we said, in the operation and maintenance fund, after post-reparendum, we estimated that it would cost between six to seven million dollars each and every year to maintain parking lots, envelope, you know, all, all the things that we need to do to maintain it, plus another 2 million for roofs and health life safety. So this summer is the first post-reparendum construction that we're seeing, and it's slightly smaller than we'd see in a typical summer. We're doing tuck pointing, we're doing concrete work, we're replacing some of the entrances to, like at Main East, we're doing the auditorium entrance. At Main South, we're doing the auditorium and spec gym. At West, we're doing the spec gym. We're doing some sewer work at West. So it's a host of projects throughout the district. Um, what we're really waiting for, and we think some of the next drivers in the next five-year plan are going to be, um, uh, the report from the security consultants on what are the safety and security measures. We know, we know we had door and hardware replacements that were holdovers from the referendum. So those are all the types of things that will go into that money and that.
Yeah, so that's going to be, so it's $6 million?
So it's, it, we don't know what it's going to be by year, but if you recall, every year in November, we bring you the projects and the budget that we're going to do for the next summer.
What was budgeted for? I thought it was five. But, okay. That's it. Thanks.
Just as a follow-up to that, and things that might be unforeseen, where, is that in there? Do you build that question in there?
So we build, we have a contingency in the on-down fund of about $50,000, but...
$50,000?
$50,000. But if it's unfore, you know, like, every year, it depends on the winter, but every year, we're good for at least one water main break, which can run between 8 and 20,000 hours. And you have to, I mean, if you want water.
So you can actually fix it?
So we, you know, um, but we, if we have something unexpected, we will bring it to the board and let the board know, but we're going to fix it.
Yeah, of course. I just didn't know if it was built into.
Yeah. Now, we only build in the $50,000 contingency. Anything above that, um, would just cause us to have a variance from budget.
Okay.
Okay. Um, next steps are this, um, we have a public hearing in August, and then, um, in September, we present the final budget along with a list of the changes that we've made between tentative and the final budget. It, it is scheduled to be adopted in September, so that we can file it with the state at the end of September. Do you have other questions in the interim? Please feel free to email me.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Mary.
Okay.
Um, we move on to board policy review. George?
Agent Board Cabinet and also the Friday notes, uh, there are five new, uh, well, five policies. Um, we'll go through each one. Just a little bit of background about the process. Our, Dr. Bonuma and Cabinet, uh, we, actually, we received a press release. We set down a team, we reviewed the policies, and, uh, our team members kind of, if it impacted their job and responsibility, kind of took a review of the policy. So they've been, uh, reviewed by Cabinet and each of the administrators. Uh, so the first one, this one's actually a brand new policy. Brett's here, which is great, because he can provide some more detail, but this is the result of a matter that we were looking into. We actually called our attorney to look at our policy, and, uh, he advised us to, to strengthen our policy. So we went to press, and this is what press is recommending. So turnover to press, kind of, to Brett to see if he's doing it. Yeah, this, yeah, this fits right in with, um, sort of the guidelines that we have out there. Um, in talking with the lawyers, they said this will help strengthen, you know, behind that, to make sure that everyone understands, um, what our, what our rules and regulations are around social media use, and that it can impact, um, them as an employee if it's not utilized in an appropriate way. So, um, based upon the recommendation from the lawyers, uh, we're recommending, uh, this to ultimately be approved after review.
And the rules that we have around that right now, where are those contained?
So the guide, so the guidelines, I've created guidelines around, um, social media and a number of other things related to communication. You'll see in here, um, there's a, there's a reference to district, um, utilized communication with students. So it's, for example, we use a product called Remind. So we have, um, all of those are, are placed on our website. And then for all new administrators and all new staff, we review those communication guidelines, um, and they're available to them anytime they want to look at them or to ask questions. And then what we also do is we remind all staff each year about these as well, um, to make sure that they're aware of what those guidelines are around all those different communication pieces, um, that they need to adhere to.
And so, so we not had a policy that the board has adopted, but we following, I guess, a procedure of some sort, or?
Yeah. That is correct.
On that point, I guess, when someone's hired, you know, these are?
These are, uh, these are the procedures. It's also in our faculty handbooks, our substitute handbooks, and a support staff handbook, and we're actually in the process of reviewing of them right now, so they've been in there.
Okay. But, but attorneys, our own attorneys, our own attorneys felt we needed to have a board policy.
It was his first question when we started asking questions. He said, "Well, I'm reviewing your policies, and you don't have this policy. Why?"
That's good.
And then we, we weren't able to answer that question necessarily, so we have, he said, "I, I would recommend that you guys adopt this one, this policy."
And so, uh, press gave us this, and, um, obviously, the policy committee, you know, this is what we would consider and talk about, but, um, there's a lot of optional things in here. So have, have, has the attorney looked this over at all? Is our attorney?
No.
We should do it first, maybe?
I think we should do it first. Right. Like, we typically, we review it, and that has been where we just simply just don't adopt the press policy. We kind of review it to make sure that it's our, uh, how we want our policies. So I think we need to go through that, and then, obviously, uh, you know, obviously.
So that it'd be coming for a first reading? Just, all of these becoming for a first reading? You're not sure when, or?
Well, we do, we'd like to, we'd like to kind of move fairly quick on it, so, um, if we could, now that we're talking about, see if we can do a, a policy before August's meeting, but I know it's July, so I'll have to be at the August meeting.
That'd be the first reading?
Correct.
Okay.
Related to the personal or social media, uh, communication policies, do we have to be worried about or concerned about if there's any private or personal communication sensitive issues? Are, did we have to worry about in this category?
Yeah. Actually, I think if I understand your question right, number six on here, it says not to disclose confidential information, uh, student records, uh, work photographs, um, without, without permission. And so, yes, that, that helps us with this as well, so, yep.
Um, maybe this isn't nippy, but under social media, it refers to Twitter, which doesn't technically exist anymore. Now it's X. Will it be changed?
Yeah, we can, we could definitely do that. Actually, we had a, a good discussion this morning about, uh, social media as well, so.
And I think just to that point, any of, like, if there's any, like, language to added platforms that may not be captured here, just as they're developed and come out. So it's not a rewriting.
Well, it does say, but it's not limited to.
To rewrite.
Yeah.
So, um, when will that policy meeting?
Well, this is technically, I think, that.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, this is technically that meeting, so. But, but I think it's, you know, anyone who, you know, wants to look further, if you have questions now, ask. I personally want to look over it more.
Yeah.
And then maybe follow up. Maybe if we can get a policy meeting.
Right. I think, yeah. I think reviewing it today gets thoughts and ideas and then we could, that makes sense.
So it's good to see it, though, today, so that we can look at it, do kind of a deep dive, and then we'll, questions come back. Thank you.
The second policy, uh, board attorney, 2160, um, it is, it is a minor change. Um, you can see, uh, in the second sentence of that, the board attorney represents the, they strike out school, or, and that's the press recommendation, so there wasn't, that really is a change. That's what I'm saying. (laughter). Especially, you know, um, we were kind of surprised as well, but, you know, it's, it was June's, uh, press, press policy, June's newsletter, so.
And then a reasoning for that? Was there a reason for that?
They probably didn't say school, or, they probably just say board, usually.
And then turn over, uh, policies three and four to, to Mary, it's kind of relates to her field again, too many changes.
Yeah. Policy 470 just is an update, um, and instead of looking at, um, designed to achieve our waste reduction of 50% in, by July 1st, 2020, they updated it to establish a goal. The logical follow-up question is, well, what's the goal? But, um, Dave Olm, as part of his goal setting, is going to determine what that goal is. Um, if you recall, we started composting, so that is an effort that will go towards achieving this goal. And then it also does, uh, when, when it is economically and practically feasible to do so, because there might be circumstances where it is not economical to do a recycling, I can't really think of any, but as you look at, um, over the last, because of construction, we would have had no problem meeting whatever goal the state put out in front of us, but, um, we really updated our efforts in terms of recycling for paper products, um, chemicals, as well as composting from the kitchen area.
Is this our policy that we wrote, or is this a press policy too?
This is a press policy. I did compare it to our policy, and this is pretty much verbatim the policy that we adopted.
I'm just surprised, I mean, I'm surprised that, I'd be happily surprised that the, all the districts aren't looking at this from, uh, energy conservation. I, I wouldn't have expected that, so I'm, I'm glad they aren't.
Press does a really nice job. Their, their newsletter, um, they do a real nice job, kind of, any changes, you can see what else or anything. It's pretty extensive, so, yeah.
But I mean, like, to the actual policy itself, though?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It is, energy conservation has been, um, a major driving force for the state for many, many years, and I think you'll see that, um, you know, through the commet grants and everything that we've been able to receive, to get more energy efficient.
That's great.
So is this, um, you said you compared it, I think ours is called the sustain, I can't remember the name.
So, like, we might have a different policy called the sustainability policy, but this actual, I compared it to what is on the West.
It doesn't conflict.
And this does not conflict with the sustainability, and this is except for these changes, because I, this was one, too, where I, I knew we had the sustainability policy, and I was like, this might be one where our language is different, and I found that it was not.
But we're have, going to have both of them? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
We've not updated our sustainability policy.
Maybe we can, maybe we can put them together. Because I know on the sustainability, there's like creation and green teams and things like that, but maybe we could build it all under one.
470.
That would be better, I think.
And then, um, 480 has a minor change under control for revolving fund and petty cash. It just has the, um, maximum for the revolving fund balances $1,000. Um, we really don't do very much in this area since the advent of P-cards, because really, we don't refund people for their minor expenditures, we put them on the P-cards. A lot of this usage used to be, um, if somebody went, took a field trip and they had to pay for a parking, um, that would be reimbursed through petty cash, or maybe a science teacher who went to the store and had to purchase, um, something for a lab, a consumables product, you know, might be, might be, uh, rubbing alcohol, might be Skittles for probabilities lab, but, um, those are the types of things. But now, most of this is put on P-cards, so the change really has no impact to us, has no impact to us, but I think it's a good idea to stay consistent with press.
That's the only change?
That is the only change.
Well, I think the next one beats it, though.
I saw this one.
6150, if they had a strikeout, I M L I S, that's, oh.
Holy gosh.
Yeah. So that's the only change, and Katie did have a chance to look at it and look at the policies, so.
So really, the only ones I've done, the, you know, the 5125, and then, you know, maybe merging the...
Perfect, that's exactly, yeah, 5125, we, the game plan there, and then merging 470 with the sustainability, I think, and we'll keep it, we'll, with no changes on the other hand.
And just as we review that, 5125, like, you said you guys have kind of met on this already, and talked through it a little bit?
Our team, yeah, we know about the press, well, we know how we kind of came up with the, how the policy came up, and to review again, so we'll look at it again.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so we are now moving on to the action item part of our agenda. Let us start with the approval of contracts. Can I get a motion on A, which is the computer information concept, CIC, Infinite Campus Program Suite?
Seven.
Thank you, and I'll pass it over to Mary.
Sure. This is a renewal of our student information system, which is Infinite Campus. The renewal is at a 5.8% increase, a lot of the software costs have been increasing, it's slightly greater than CPI. This, because it is a renewal, there's really no change in terms, it was budgeted in the tech budget.
Any questions? If none, Jenny, can you take the roll?
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. Next is, can I get a motion on frontline education, frontline central, and professional learning management software?
Two more.
Give it a second.
Second.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a clarification, we are renewing the frontline professional learning management system, and we are not renewing the frontline central module. The professional learning, and it's a rollover, provides and tracks all of our PD approvals and routing. The frontline central was used by HR, and they just found that it was not providing the value that it used to, the customer service has really declined on the HR side, so they are opting not to renew that, and that comes in savings of about 30. Again, this was budgeted in the tech budget as part of software, the increase is about a six and a half percent increase.
So this is a, we are not really renewing like every three years to save some money, something like that?
So this is, we're, every year, this is a one-year contract, so we renew each and every year. As part of this renewal, we dropped one module and renewed a second module. The module we renewed was the for professional development. It provides a tracking mechanism, it allows us to comply with the Local Expense Control Act, which limits our travel expenditures, and that's a resolution that the board always passes in September. So this will tell you how, where the district went, who went, how much we spent on travel, as well as then routes that for approvals, so that we can ensure that every travel voucher has been properly approved.
So is cost effective by doing annual basis of renewal?
Yes, because they always look at, is there something else that'll come out that is cheaper that does the same thing, so we don't want to lock ourselves in a whole entire contract for this. Frontline, we've been using it for a number of years, but before that, we had a different software system that did this.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, Jenny, if you could take the roll?
Collins?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye. All right, can I get a motion to move into closed session for appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees?
So...
Second.
Collins?
Aye.
Coil?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?